Okay, I think we're gonna go ahead and get started and welcome everybody. The first thing we're gonna do today before we get into the regular council meeting is have a Board of Health meeting. So if everybody would like to stand, we're gonna go ahead and recite the Pledge of Allegiance to get started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
So Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Holt?
Here.
Councilmember Pope?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Approve the minutes for meeting number two on April 19th, 2022, as presented. Recommendation: Approve the minutes.
So moved. Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set to consider condemnation of the structures on the property located at 306 West 6th in the city of Atumal, Wapalo County, Iowa.
I'll go ahead and open the condemnation hearing, and I believe Zach, you're gonna do the presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. This property's been placarded since February 2019. There was a repair plan initially received, but there was no progress made toward completing that repair plan, and it's since expired. Building inspectors have found the property unsecured on multiple occasions and open to the elements, has broken windows and doors, and is currently being used to storage. There's still several code violations that persist on the property. The condemnation notice was served by certified mail and by posting on the property, as well as publication in the courier.
Does Council have any questions for Zach? Is there anybody here that's appealing this condemnation hearing? Okay. If there's no further comments, I entertain a motion to close the condemnation hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Condemn the structures located at 306 West 6th, order prompt demolition, removal, and leveling of the lot, and direct all costs attendant to such actions, including administrative costs, to be assessed against the property and/or collected from the owner or owners thereof. Recommendation: Approve the condemnation of the structures located at 306 West 6th Street.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set to consider condemnation of the structures of the property located at 201 North Holt in the city of Atumal, Wapalo County, Iowa.
I'll go ahead and open the condemnation hearing, and I believe Zach's gonna present on this as well.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you again, Council. I did put together some slides for this one because it is a little bit more complex of a case. 201 North Holt, first of all, is a case that probably should've come before the council a while ago. It was originally placarded in December of 2018, however, the paper file was lost sometime around April of 2019. It had to be reconstructed, and we restarted after we received additional complaints in October of 2021. We'll talk a little bit about what happened during the original file, and then we'll talk about what we've done since we reopened. During the original placard, the placard was placed December 28th of 2019, and the owner was instructed to provide a repair plan and stand inspection. On January 3rd of 2019, the owner removed the placard, so staff had to replace the placard and return with the Atumal Police Department to meet with the owner, explain that the placard itself had to stay on, and also state the rules as far as not occupying the dwelling, submitting the repair plan, those sorts of things. By April 11th of that year, no progress had been made, and there was still no inspection or repair plan. A notice was sent scheduling an inspection for April 16th. The owner did not appear at that inspection, but there was a dog heard inside barking and whining inside the house, so staff obtained a search warrant, returned with the Atumal Police Department. At that time, the owner was present, and the property was inspected. There was still no repair plan documented at all during the initial period where it was placarded. We received additional complaints in October of 2021, folks asking, you know, why hasn't this property been dealt with? It seems like the tag's been on it for a long time. And that was when we kind of reconciled that that paper file had been lost. Thankfully, since 2019, we've implemented the new iWork program, and it's a lot easier to keep track of programs, or keep track of files when we have that digital reference as well. So hopefully, this isn't an issue that comes up again. But regardless, October 21, it was first brought to our attention. We did reconstruct the old file, and on January 25th, 2022, we decided the most appropriate thing would be to restart the process by issuing a new placard notice. So at that time, the owner made no contact after receiving the new notice and did not submit a repair plan. We sent a final notice to submit a repair plan on February 16th of 2022. We completed an inspection on May 10th, which was the first time we were able to get into the property for any of the scheduled inspections. At that time, there was evidence that someone was living in the building in violation of the placard, and the deficiency list was also updated. The owner requested an inspection for today, ahead of this Board of Health meeting, after receiving the condemnation notice. This is really the first time that, first of all, we've noted any progress on the file at all, and I'll show some pictures of where we were at today's inspection, and also, it's the first time that the owner's been proactive about working with us in any capacity. At the June 7th inspection, some interior progress was documented. There's drywall improvements. The property still does not have connections to utilities, including water and electric. There's also significant electrical work required to be done inside the house, roof replacement for the attached garage, and other deficiencies that are in the deficiency list. The owner was arrested on August 25th, 2020, for keeping animals at the placarded property, and at the June 7th inspection today, there were still cats kept on the property, and there are also continues to be evidence that people continue to live in the property. These are some photos from today, the outside of the house. There are some deficiencies as far as siding, paint, railings, and some other things on some of the decks. You'll also see here, this kind of shows some of the issues with the roof on the attached garage, excuse me. It also shows the electrical service has been disconnected. Inside, you will see some, this is some of the evidence of the new drywall, as well as in the bathroom, and this photo will show some of the damage again to that roof, but for that tarp, it's completely open. So, excuse me. The staff will maintain the recommendation that the property should be condemned and demolished. There has been some progress, all of which seems to have been made since we issued the condemnation notice, but there's still significant extensive work that has to be done. If the board does feel that more time's appropriate, I did provide a written motion for an extension. That way, it's a little easier than the last time we did an extension, and it was hard to get the exact wording of the motion, but if we do want to go that direction, I also have that written out, and I gave copies to Chris and everybody else.
Does Council have any questions for Zach?
Zach, can you go into a little bit of detail, and I know that this really isn't your responsibility to know this, so if you don't, that's fine. From a financial perspective, what do you think it'll cost to get that property in the repair that it needs to be in, to not be on the placarded list any longer?
So I guess one issue is that, my understanding is that there's an outstanding water bill that's several thousand dollars at this point, but there's also electrical issues, and I wouldn't want to put an estimate having not even been inside recently. I don't know, Jeff, you would have an idea?
The roof of the front garage, the roof would be a pretty good one. Finishing up the siding, I think, that may be next. There's some pictures to do, but the plumber was there, he does have gas time. I think he said he had five lines for some of the flooring. He did have some flooring, now it's fine. I think whatever's going on with the ancillary, they're getting the roof of the garage repaired.
And the electrician and that sort of work. It's hard to put a number to it, I guess.
Okay. And the points in time when, just so I'm clear on this, the points in time that the city has been to the property to inspect it, virtually everything that is required of a placarded property, they have violated. Is that correct? To the specific point of keeping animals on it residing on the property, things like that? They have violated all of those to this point since 2018?
Yes.
And has there been any reason given since 2018 why there has never been a repair plan submitted? No repairs have been done to this point?
So, we did receive a repair plan very late in this last phase of the project, but before that, no.
Okay. And from your professional opinion, do you suspect that even with this three-month extension timeline, that this will be able to be met, both in spirit and technically speaking?
The last month notwithstanding, the answer would've been absolutely no. The last month, I mean, if they were able to sustain doing that, there's not really strong evidence in the past to show they could, but if they were able to sustain doing that, I suppose it could be possible to complete those items.
Specific to the point that it's a placarded property, and they're not to keep animals nor reside on the property, and they're still doing that currently, that shows at least in spirit that they can't honor this?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Did the repair plan that you received recently address all the deficiencies that have been identified? To your department's satisfaction?
I didn't even see a copy of it in the file. I know that we had some verbal agreement to talk about what progress could be made up to today's inspection. I don't think that it was ever intended to address everything I was, think it's supposed to be intended to address showing they could do progress between when the condemnation notice came out and today. Is that fair?
Yeah, I think it was, Kevin came in and talked, and we kind of discussed what he was gonna do from then and out. I think that time period was only a few weeks, so we didn't put anything down on paper.
Any other questions for Zach? Is the owner of 201 North Holt here today? Is there anything that you would like to present to the council? If so, would you come to the microphone and address the council by giving your name and your address, and any pertinent information that you have to share?
Kevin Skinner, I own 201 North Holt, and there was a plan grew up when they first tagged it because it was tagged for the hand railing and overhang. The hand railing around the deck was completed. What he done was his copy, because he's the one that signed it, and Doug Mays. So the hand railing and the overhang got done.
What about the other deficiencies that, over time, the city has found that would need to be corrected in order for you to continue to maintain ownership of this property?
All them cats are stray cats that are in the yard. They ain't my cats.
But they're in the house?
There was only two kittens that was in the house, and that's it.
And nobody's living there?
No.
So you own this property, but you're not living there?
Right.
So are you planning on this being your residence, or are you fixing this up to use it as a rental property?
No, I own it, and I'm gonna stay in it.
You want to live there?
Yeah, and I've been fixing it up.
But he works six, seven days a week for Kohl's Trucking.
So, yeah, and I only got a timeline from seven until seven, but I go to work at 1:30.
So where?
So that don't give me a lot of time, only in the morning, to get something done.
So, when you came up to the microphone, you said your address was 201 Holt Street?
North.
North Holt. So if you're not living there currently, where are you actually residing at now?
Out of my parents.
And where is that?
1578 150th Street, one mile from the airport.
So if you're working six, seven days a week, and multiple hours a day, like you said, how do you intend to, this is a very aggressive plan that's presented, how would you intend to possibly get that accomplished?
His family's gonna do it.
Well, and plus, see, I wasn't told from the get-go that I had to have a licensed electrician or plumber to do the wiring and all that. They never told me that.
The way we understood it was the ordinance for the city of Atumal was if, as long as you owned the property and was gonna live in the property, you could do all your own work.
Zach, is that correct? They don't need a licensed electrician if the owner's doing their own work?
So, when you live in your residence where you get your homestead tax credit, all those sorts of things?
You, the law does not require a master electrician to do that work, but when we're talking about a dwelling that's been placarded going on four years, it's not your dwelling at that point. It hasn't been a dwelling for over three years, so that's kind of the issue that we have, is that it's hard to establish that that's your homestead, or that's where you reside when you can't reside there and you haven't been able to reside there for so long.
The other question I guess I have is, you can't live in a property if you don't have utilities hooked up, and they indicated you have some large back utility bills that haven't paid. Do you think that's something you're gonna be able to handle or not?
Yeah. The water bill was only a hundred and some dollars, and I had them shut it off because I had to replace my shut-off valves in the house because it's leaking.
So it's not several thousand dollars that you owe?
No, not for the water bill, no.
Well, how about gas and electric?
Nothing for gas.
The lights he does, and he's gonna borrow against his 401K to get that done.
So you have a back electrical bill that needs to be paid off?
Well, I guess I have a question, or a couple. So if you are working, I think you said until?
I go to work at 1:30 in the afternoon, and I get off at 9:30 at night.
So when have you been working on the house?
In the mornings, about four or five hours in the morning.
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought you meant 1:30 in the morning. I apologize for that. Okay, so my next question too is, so you've received multiple notices, and I think there's been two plans submitted, maybe at the beginning and then recently?
Yeah, there was one at the beginning, and then I've never heard from them until now.
So I think there's been noted, well, I don't think there's been other notices that have been presented. Correct, Zach?
Can you clarify what you mean, I guess?
So in between that first plan and then now, wasn't there, were there other notices presented?
So, yes, so we would've re-sent a new placard notice on January 25th. We also sent, there's also some nuisance notices in here for junk vehicles, so I'm trying to separate. And we obviously would've sent the notice to abate, which is the condemnation notice.
Was that on 429?
Right, and then, looks like we had a notice to contact on May 20th of this year, and I think that would've mostly been what set this inspection today. Also, an inspection appointment on April 22nd, which was for an inspection on May 10th, where Mr. Skinner did not appear. The notice to abate. A final request for a repair plan on February 16th, and a, and then the placard notice on January 25th.
So I'm looking at the one from December 28th, 2018, and I know you said that the original one was, I think you said a hand railing and an overhang, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the one from December 28th, 2018, the deficiency list, I mean, there's nine things on there, nine different things, and one of them is provide required legal utilities. So I guess my concern is, is that now we are in 2022, and the utilities are still not on or set up, correct?
Right. The utilities ain't on because the wiring ain't, I didn't have the wiring done in the house.
The what? I'm sorry.
The electrical in the house wasn't done, so there was no sense of having a wiring to hook up the meter when?
Yes, I understand what you're saying, that the wiring wasn't done, but in 2018, that was one of the requirements of the deficiency list, was that utilities were on. And now we are in 2020, and we're still at the same, I mean, and I'm just picking one of those out, like, we're still at the same spot, and they haven't been paid on either, correct? There's still that back payment.
They've been paid on.
But there's still a back bill, right? So I guess my concern is, is that, you know, it's four years later, oh, not, three and a half, and we're still, the first one on here still has not been accomplished, and that's a concern to me.
And I guess I would just piggyback off of that, and this goes back to the question that I asked Zach, and I don't expect you to answer this, it's really not my business, but when, you know, this deficiency list that we have before us right now is so long and extensive, and I'm hearing that you have to cash out 401K just to pay the electric bill, that makes me pause and have a lot of concern that you'll be able to have the money to afford all of the laundry list of improvements that need to be made in a very short amount of time, especially when we're considering electricians and plumbers and such like that.
And most of the rooms in the house is completed.
I guess my concern is, or my question is, you're asking for a three-month extension, right? Will you be able to have this done in three months?
Well, when Jeff was at my house today, he said it was six months.
I should clarify, so that's the motion that we've written, which is asking to check in in three months. The repair plan could be up to six months. I don't know if there's an issue necessarily with that, if we go that direction.
Oh, that was what I was wondering. So in six months, you will have this completed?
Yeah, I can have it done.
I just gotta say something.
The two biggest changes, well, one biggest thing is electrical, because I wasn't told I couldn't wire my own house, so now I gotta hire an electrician to do it. But the rest of it's almost done.
The kitchen cabinets, we have to bring in from Albieta. I've got them.
But you do understand what Mr. Simonson said, because your house has been condemned, that necessitates that you're gonna have to have the electrical work done by a licensed electrician?
Yes, yeah.
And he's already talked to somebody.
Does Council have any more questions for Mr. Skinner?
I just have a comment. It's putting us in a tough situation, and I admire you for working every day, because a lot of people in America don't want to, so I applaud you for that and work hard. But it seems like you guys never buckled down to start doing what you should've done, starting back in 2018. We'll even say the city never got back with you.
Yeah.
It should've been done, something by your guys as part of your property that you want fixed. It seems like it didn't become a priority until more heat came to you guys, like the city's cracking down on this.
No, because I was working on it the whole time.
And see, we had the pandemic, nobody was coming out, everything was shut down, so that was almost a whole year right there. But my mom and dad and me and my husband are gonna be, where did we come from, Albieta? But we'll be in here, and my mom and dad are planning on being over there Saturday. I just think, I gotta say this because there's houses right behind me that are so derelict, I can't believe people are living in them, and I took pictures of them. I can't believe how bad the West End is, period, and I lived there for 32 years before I moved down there.
Well, and that's part of the problem, ma'am, that's why.
Right, but he keeps his yard up. I mean, you look at his, I have a picture of his grand yard.
Well, for one, we're not concerned right now with the other properties, because the topic is you guys talking with us and us talking with you guys about 201.
Well, we'll have it done in six months, with all of us down there.
I think the concern is, is that it's been four years since the first time that this came. So how do we know that if we give you six months, that it will be done when you've been given four years?
Because it'll be done in six months.
But you've been?
Between all of us, we can have it done. The problem is the electrical, and like he said, he can take his 401K. If that's what it takes to keep his house, it's his privilege to take his money and do it that way.
But what I don't understand, if you can do it in six months, why wait three and a half years before you start to say you'll have it done in six months?
No one come around after the house, after they tagged the house.
Right, but sir, it's your?
But I was working on it the whole time. Every room had been re-sheared, rocked, insulated, and everything.
I don't have anything else.
Zach, do you have any rebuttal or clarifying statements that you want to make before we wrap this up?
No, there's not really anything else, Dad, I don't think. I think everything's been covered.
Okay, well, thank you very much for coming up and presenting your case. Does Council have any final questions, Zach, before we go forward? Okay. Yes, is there, I'm sorry, what? Did you have something?
First, you have to close the hearing and then make a motion on whichever way.
So if we're done discussing, would somebody like to make a motion to close the condemnation hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
No. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Condemn the structures located at 201 North Holt, order prompt demolition, removal, and leveling of the lot, and direct all costs attendant to such actions, including administrative costs, to be assessed against the property and/or collected from the owner or owners thereof. Recommendation: Approve the condemnation of the structures located at 201 North Holt.
Is there a motion to approve that recommendation?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Councilman Holt, did you have a question?
No, I was asking who made it.
She was asking who said it. Sorry.
Okay, sorry.
Just to clarify her question.
So Chris will go ahead and take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
No.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
4-1 motion with carries. A public hearing was held on the matter of condemnation of the property located at 153 South Fellows on 4/19/2022. City Council agreed to delay the condemnation if the property owner complied with specific conditions. Those conditions have not been met. Condemn the structures located at 153 South Fellows, order prompt demolition, removal, and leveling of the lot, and direct all costs attendant to such actions, including administrative costs, to be assessed against the property and/or collected from the owner or owners thereof. Recommendation: Approve the condemnation of the structures located at 153 South Fellows.
I'll go ahead and open the condemnation hearing. Oh, okay. So do we have a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Zach?
Thank you, Mayor. At the April 19th meeting of the Board of Health, there was a hearing on the property at 153 South Fellows, and the board agreed to permit a three-month extension, provided that the owner completed an inspection within one week and returned a repair plan within seven days of that inspection. The inspection occurred on April 29th, but no repair plan has been submitted despite attempts to contact the property owner. At that inspection, there were several deficiencies with the property. The owner was present. There was actually water coming in through the ceiling during the inspection, as well as some other issues that had shown deterioration since we'd been in there last. Because this is a violation of the agreement made on April 19th, 2022, the staff does recommend proceeding with condemnation.
So you've heard nothing more from the homeowner?
No, not since reaching out. No, not since reaching out and trying to get that repair plan. And we did send a notice as well as email, which she did say was her preferred mode of communication. We sent a letter and an email saying that this hearing, or not hearing, but this meeting was happening tonight, and didn't hear anything.
And the property owner is not here, correct?
No.
Okay. So Chris will take the role.
Counsel member McIntyre?
Yes.
Counsel member Hall?
Yes.
Counsel member Pope?
Yes.
Counsel member Rowe?
Yes.
Counsel member Galloway?
Yes.
Okay, if we have no other business for the Board of Health, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Health meeting.
So moved. Second.
Counsel member McIntyre?
Yes.
Counsel member Hall?
Yes.
Counsel member Pope?
Yes.
Counsel member Rowe?
Yes.
Counsel member Galloway?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move to the city council meeting, and I'm going to open the city council meeting, and Chris will take the role.
Counsel member Galloway?
Yes.
Counselor. Counsel member McIntyre?
Here.
Counsel member Hall?
Here.
Counsel member Pope?
Here.
Counsel member Rowe?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
I would recommend or suggest a motion to approve all of the items on the consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Counsel member Galloway?
Yes.
Counsel member McIntyre?
Yes.
Counsel member Hall?
Yes.
Counsel member Pope?
Yes.
Counsel member Rowe?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is approve tonight's council meeting agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Counsel member Galloway?
Yes.
Counsel member McIntyre?
Yes.
Counsel member Hall?
Yes.
Counsel member Pope?
Yes.
Counsel member Rowe?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is the city administrator's report, so turn it over to Phil.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I'm pleased to announce that the city had received a letter from the Iowa Economic Development Authority. It was a project maintenance closeout letter. This was a project with Winger Contracting Company. And from the, the agency, or the authority, I should say, it says, "It is their pleasure to congratulate the city on successfully maintaining the job obligations through the maintenance period. Regarding the above referenced project, the authority's review of payroll documents included that the job maintenance requirement has been met. In summary, the project completion date of April 30, 2011, with a project maintenance date of April 30, 2021. The business was required to maintain 229 full-time equivalent jobs, of which 207 needed to be qualified FTEs. At the end of the maintenance date, the business had 275, of which 274 were qualified FTE. Qualified employees were paid at least $12.40 per hour. And third, Winger Contracting Company met the sufficient benefits requirement. Since all those project activities have been completed and verified, the authority has closed the project file. Authority has determined the job maintenance requirement has been satisfied." So we had one of these last year where it was determined that the job specification had not been met, and the city had to pay back money. So I wanted to reiterate when we do get something that's positive, and we did meet and exceed the job requirement, or Winger, I should say, did, did that. And so these projects and programs can be effective in helping city projects and businesses, and this is just one case. So I wanted to take the time just to point that out and, and reference the positives that can happen from partnerships with IEDA and our business community. Now, on a different note, I also wanted to kind of just remind the, the public, we, we had a couple of things just a moment ago in Board of Health. We've had counsel, the mayor, city staff have received phone calls about long grass. We've started getting phone calls about fireworks. So there's just a number of things I wanted to highlight. And the other item on here was nuisances and responsibility for abatement. I just want to highlight a couple of things for the public and kind of hit on those things. So in section, or chapter 24 of our city code, in 24 and a half, there is provisions talking about public nuisances that, bless you. One thing is that public nuisances, the creation or maintenance of a nuisance is unlawful and is prohibited by code. Nuisance is defined as anything that would be injurious to the senses or an obstruction to the free use of property so as to essentially interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property by the public or community, and that is deemed a nuisance. There are about over 20 different things that are identified as nuisances. Just highlight a couple of them. Noxious or offensive substances is a nuisance. On-site wastewater systems, obstructing streets, unoccupied buildings, vegetation growth, this is where we have tall grass. Anything more than 10 inches in the city is considered a violation. Harboring vermin, prohibited outdoor storage, which would include junk vehicles, abandoned vehicles, equipment materials, property maintenance. This is kind of where we hit with the, the Board of Health, making sure that property is kept up. Yard and garage sales, if you have more than five consecutive days or more than two times a year, anything more than that is prohibited. Storage of tires. And there's a number of other things that are identified in the code. Again, that's section 24, if anyone is wanting to look into that a little bit more. Responsibility for abatement. The owner, agent, Lisi, occupant, or other person in charge of any building or premise where any of the things are forbidden by this chapter exist, or where any of the things have originated, or any person responsible for the existence, origin, or continuance of such things shall correct, remove, or abate such thing without delay. And that might be repair, removal, cleaning, mowing, draining, you know, a number of things that are identified by code. If these things are brought up to the city and the individual is notified, it is that responsibility, it should be without needing to have to identify or notify the individuals. So education, that's part of what this is, as far as to help educate the public on those items. Beyond that, though, once it is notified, or an individual is notified and a timeline is given, that is their responsibility, and now the knowledge is there to abate those nuisances. If that is not done, the city can cause to have that done and the cost borne on the, the property owner. And so unfortunately, one of these things where you get, and we've received calls, and for the public's knowledge, we get something like tall grass, there is a timeline. By the time the grass is already tall enough to notice that it's tall, we still have to provide notice for at least the first time of the season to do that. Giving them adequate time to try to abate that nuisance. And then beyond that, if they haven't abated that nuisance, working with our contractor to do such abatement. Unfortunately, there can be a little bit of lag in time there, and that nuisance continues to get worse until it is taken care of that first time. After that first notice, then it is in the contract to be reviewed and abated on a regular basis if the owner is unresponsive on any of those occasions going forward. And that has to be done on an annual basis, so we do that as quickly as we can and as quickly as we observe or are notified of these nuisances. That, I guess, is all I wanted to mention on those. If there's any questions, I can take those, or Zach, or law enforcement. Otherwise, I will pass it back over to you, Mayor.
Counsel have any questions, comments for Administrator Raff?
I did have one other thing to mention. This came out of Atoma Leadership Academy, especially when we're talking about items where there may be neighbors helping neighbors, would be an opportunity for individuals to get a helping hand in repair or abatement of some things. And through the United Way website, people can get information on how to request help and how to volunteer to help neighbors. It's the Resilient Neighbors Program. That is, was a project, the winning project this year in Atoma Leadership Academy. And an opportunity for all of us to come together and help our neighbors out in being able to provide and request assistance needed to help, whether it's mowing the lawn, fixing a broken shutter, whatever it might be. No project is too big or too small, and resources are available.
That's a great program. Anything else in your report?
No, no, I did want to mention that, though, so thank you.
Okay.
All right, one other thing. When you do mow the lawn, grass clippings should not go in the streets. That is also a violation. I believe that's mentioned every year. I did promise to get that mentioned. That has the effect of getting into the stormwater system and can clog things up, so we want to make sure that the clippings are staying in the yards, bagged or whatever needs be, but not going into the streets and sidewalks.
Not to mention it's dangerous for motorcycles and bicycles as well.
And can cause other hazards for, yes, yes, that's, thank you.
Anything else?
That is it. I, done.
Okay. This is the time during our city council meeting where I would ask if anyone in the audience would like to address any of the items on tonight's agenda. If not, we'll go ahead and keep moving forward.
Replacement of threaded rod on a 36-inch slide gate at Gateway Lift Station. Recommendation: Approve the replacement of one threaded rod at the Gateway Lift Station in the amount of $5,390.
Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Larry?
These stems are required to open remote sluice gates. This particular stem is 22-foot long. You stand on top of a pump station in order to operate this gate. During the operation, which is required or recommended four times a year in order to keep them from seizing, there was a log that horsed in from the system under the gate. This is one of them that happens to be submerged year-round, and as they were closing, it had been a stem. It is part of our flood protection and is required. As you can see, the bid amount was $5,390, and we needed to repair the station.
Counsel have any questions for Larry? Sounds pretty straightforward. Hearing none, Chris will take the role.
Counsel member Galloway?
Yes.
Counsel member McIntyre?
Yes.
Counsel member Hall?
Yes.
Counsel member Pope?
Yes.
Counsel member Rowe?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of certain real property locally known as Legion Field to the Atoma Community School District.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And I believe, Phil, you're going to lead the discussion on this item.
I will lead it, and if anyone else has anything to add from staff, feel free to do so, please. So earlier this year, the city was, was this American Legion? Yes. The city was advised the American Legion would not be able to continue with the ongoing maintenance of Memorial Legion Field. The field had been shared for Legion Ball in the Atoma High School historically. The Atoma School District has offered to take on the operations and maintenance of the field. In addition to the maintenance agreement, and in consideration of future improvements, a transfer property would be in order. City attorney drafted an agreement, which was approved by the school district. Additionally, the district has voted to maintain the name of the field at a recent meeting. And it is my understanding that they also are going to name the stadium after John Hart, who was instrumental in helping to create and maintain over all these years the field and, and the operations for the Legion, Legion Ball Field.
I have questions. So first off, I am a little concerned that we're looking at getting a piece of our park right in the middle. I've looked over the contract that the attorney drafted up, and I think, Phil, when you and I talked in person, there, I kind of expressed some of this concern. There was something about if they wanted to sell, they couldn't sell it, they, it would go back to us. I don't see that in this contract. Am I missing that completely? Did anyone else see that?
There should be, not that it would automatically go to us, but there'd be a right of reversion to the city, and it needed to be used for the ball field.
And again, I could have missed it, but I just read it a couple of times, and I didn't think I saw that on there.
I didn't have that. What page was that on? Do you have that?
I don't know. Well, it starts on page, item F starts on page 117.
Oh, so on 117. So this was the conveyance information for the field itself. The agreement that was approved previously had that language in it. This is the, the legal transaction between the district and the, the city for that conveyance of property.
When you say the agreement that, that was voted on prior, when was that? Because I thought that at our last meeting, we were just voting to have a public hearing on this, that we weren't voting for that. And while you're looking for that, I guess my other question is, why would we? I know that our Parks Department is in need of money, so I do have some concern for selling it for $1. And I understand that at the same time, it will take, well, I guess maybe it wouldn't take burden away if someone else was doing it at the time, maybe it'll add burden, but, you know, I know that we, as a city, are looking for money, too. So selling it for a dollar seems, and I'm not saying selling it for a ton of money, but seeing, selling it to a dollar, for a dollar seems a little odd to me. And I guess my final comment on this, too, is with us trying to redo our whole park down there, again, I go back to giving that piece of the park that is in the middle of it and having a different entity own it does cause me concern, especially when we haven't finalized what our park plan is.
Yeah, okay. So a couple of things with regard to that. One is, the city has not been maintaining that property. That has been maintained through the agreements with the Legion and to a lesser degree, the school district. So in order for us, we are taking on new expense to maintain that. So that is part of that trade-off, where you're talking about for a dollar. The other piece of that is, we're talking about essentially the same tax base. So whether it's the city taxes or the school district taxes, now, the school district does reach outside of the city limits itself. But aside from that, you'd be hitting the same tax base. So whether the school district, you know, if, if we charge them $100,000, that's still going to hit the taxpayers the same way. So there isn't any real gain in that regard. It would be a one-time expense or revenue that we would receive. Yes, it would be beneficial, but then it also takes away from what the district is looking to do. And there's no obligation for them to purchase it. They could just build their own field. And then there's no benefit. We've got a ball field that we're not able to maintain as far as, or, or not able to maintain with our current resources. We'd have to look to add staff or do different, or contract that out as it is. Those are some things that went into play there. This particular field, I'd say, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Zach, on this, but my understanding is, with that park plan, this particular piece was not necessarily moving. You know, the ball fields, we're kind of looking at moving around with that. So the improvements done to this site are beneficial to the, the plan moving forward. And then as far as carrying that out, one of the things that was not included with that on purpose was the parking. So it's still, city still maintains the public parking. You know, not, that is not included as part of this. This is the field, and I think the six-foot perimeter around the field, 15-foot perimeter around the field. So the rest of that still stays inside the city and gets used for the city purposes. Parking is still public, would be shared with, you know, future needs of what the, the district would be looking at. The reason for the district looking to own that is so that they're able to proceed with their plans for improvements and development of that field. You know, if they're leasing that, you know, it makes it much more difficult to, what do I say? If you're renting a property, you're not going to stick a bunch of money into it to improve it with no guarantee that you have any future ownership or anything else. So that, that's a big piece of what, you know, they want to do, what does improve the area. And that was part of that, so.
And, but again, I go back to, if they decide that one day they want to build a bigger field, and then they sell that piece. Like, I, I would like to, again, I thought that that was supposed to be in the contract, and I don't, I don't remember seeing a contract that says that, so. And that's, I mean, that's important to me. I think that we do. And that's, I mean, that's important to me. I think that we do not want that, a big piece, because it sounds like we're going to have to make our park plan around this field now if we do sell it to the, or we do sell it to the school district.
The contract would have been provided at a prior meeting, I think when we were setting the public hearing date. If that wasn't part of that packet, then I will need to forward that out because that had a lot more than what this is. It talked about, you know, who was responsible for the taxes, the purchase price, the closing. We had a, you know, closing date in there for June 30. As I'm looking at it now.
And the council did approve that agreement already?
We approved the public hearing.
But not the agreement itself, so then we will need to, I'd say probably pull this and-
I'd like to table this until we see that agreement.
Have the agreement for you to consider, because it does cover a lot of the other items there then. It talks about the maintenance improvements to property, events of default, you know, all of those things, so, okay.
I only got one, one concern. I, I agree with Karen the fact about the dollar, and I talked to Phil early on. My only concern with that is what are we going to say later on down the road if the tennis crew that we promised to donate some money for them to, what if they're interested in buying the tennis field land from the city? You know, I want to make sure we're not setting the precedence there that we're going to start selling off land. But whether the Legion still had the, their name ahead of the contract or below, I think whether we sold it or not, the sports complex that they're planning on making, wherever they're planning on putting it, was going to be based around the ball field where it's at now.
Yeah, and the Park Board did review and recommend approval of the sale of this particular parcel. So it was something that, that they did follow that, those channels as well.
So since the council hasn't approved that other more detailed agreement that also includes the information that councilwoman would like to see included in that, we're going to table this then?
We need to make a motion, but yeah. So I, so, so there was a question about the placement of this field and working around it. I was able to attend, as well as Administrator, the meeting we just had with the developers, the ones that are developing the parks plan. From everything that I've seen from that meeting, if we do move forward with this sale, it won't hurt the placement of any other of the ballparks. We can work around it. And so I, I've watched that very carefully to make sure that we weren't biting off something that we couldn't choose. So, yeah, I don't think we'll have a problem if we do go through with the sale and, and setting up the rest of the ballparks there.
Yeah. And I'll let you take a look at this, and we'll have to get it on the next agenda for approval. The agreement did have deed restrictions with that. A use restriction, district shall not discontinue use of the property for recreational athletic purposes. A conditional reversionary right, providing that if the district does discontinue use of the property for recreational purposes, or there was an event of default caused by a district, the city would automatically be entitled to reacquire title of the property. And then a right of first refusal, providing that if the district should desire to sell the property anytime in the future, that it would be done so, the city would have right of first refusal, and that it would be for that same dollar that was sold to them for. So we wouldn't be selling it to them for a dollar, and they sell it to us for a million dollars. It would still be that same dollar going forward, and that was all part of that agreement that the district had approved. I sincerely apologize that I missed this in getting that approved to council. And will, I guess, request to have that removed from tonight's agenda and follow the proper channels on that.
Thank you.
So do we have a motion to table this item?
We have to close the public hearing first.
Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
So now we need a motion to table until the next council meeting?
Which I can read that if you guys want me to.
Okay.
So a motion to table Resolution Number 124, 2022, Public Hearing on the Proposal to Convey Certain Real Property Locally Known as Legion Field to Atumwa Community School District.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
We're going to have the same issue on the next one.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of certain real property being a portion of the property locally known as Pickwick Park to the Atumwa Community School District.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and I just asked Administrator Rath if we were going to have the same issue with this one that we had with the prior one, if there was an agreement that hasn't been approved by the council yet. Because the dollar amount and stuff was the same for both.
Yeah.
Again, I've just, just making sure that the contract says that if they decide to sell, that it comes back to us.
I'm not aware of a similar agreement. The issue with the ball field, there were specific things that were in that to make sure that the city had, because of the specialized interest, because it was in the center of the park area, the reversion rights, those are some of the things that were talked about, that that was included in an agreement separate from the, the sale. This, I believe, is just a transfer of the property. Again, the Park Board has reviewed this. They have authorized the transfer of property. My understanding is this is something where the school district is, is looking at improving, correct if I'm wrong, but I believe it's Doma School District. And this is, so the, the park right now has a play structure. I'm not aware of anything else in this particular neighborhood park. Okay, okay. So all of that, I believe, would be taken care of. There'd be some parking. The play structure, or a play structure would be relocated on the site during school hours. That would be for the school. Outside of school hours, it essentially still becomes a neighborhood park without the need to maintain the area and other things. You know, on weekends, in the evenings, neighborhood kids can still play on it. You know, there's no issue with that. But it's to help provide public health and safety of the facility and students, providing better ingress and egress around the school. And there was not a separate agreement that I'm aware of, other than this conveyance of property.
But also, part of their plan is that to build another school on that property also?
There, go ahead, Zach. But they need to have sufficient parking, ingress and egress for the building and the addition, and make sure they have that available. Moving the playground structure is a piece of that for the, the safety of students. I think right now they're crossing the parking lot or driveway to get from the, the school to the playground and vice versa. This would eliminate that risk, and that's part of their larger plan. And I understand as far as the, the dollar being a concern, but again, when we're talking about working with similar tax bases and community partners, these are some of the things that we look at, I look at, and ask you to consider as far as bettering the community and, and not over, you know, playing games of shuffling dollars between entities.
Does council have any other questions, comments for Phil? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution Number 141, 2022, Public Hearing on the Proposal to Convey Certain Real Property Being a Portion of the Property Locally Known as Pickwick Park to the Atumwa Community School District. Recommendation: Pass and Adopt Resolution Number 141, 2022.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of certain real property, Lot 1 of Atumwa Airport Subdivision 5 to Joe Wiley.
I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and I believe, Zach, you're going to present on this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Joe Wiley offered to purchase the lot, this is Lot 1 of Airport Subdivision 5, for an appraised price of $16,500. The city obtained a deed of release from the FAA to authorize the sale of this property. Joe Wiley owns Bridge City Truck Repair and plans on expanding that truck repair business onto this lot. New airport development does allow us to generate airport fees from this property and also supports other economic development benefits from supporting that business. The deed of release did require an aviation easement. It also required that we sell the property for at least the appraised price, which is $16,500. It also required that we wait on the federal government for a very, very long time. So this has been in the works for months and months.
Because since it's airport property, the FAA has to approve this also, correct?
Right. The, so we own a lot of property out at the airport, but our rights to use that property because we got it from the federal government are subject to asking permission. Or at least that's how it's been interpreted in the past.
And the airport and, or the staff at the airport and the airport board approved this and thinks it, think it's a great idea?
I don't actually know about the airport board for sure. I can't speak to that, but I do know that we've been talking with airport staff about these to make sure that we schedule the closings without conflicting with issues, the uses they have, that kind of thing. I'm trying to be good about that.
Any other questions, comments for Zach from the council?
Not really for Zach, but, and this is nothing against Zach. When it's a airport thing, and we, I know we have a director of the airport, is there a particular reason that you're presenting it and not the director of the airport?
I guess, so, part of this is that it started before we even had the current airport director that we have. So some of, some of that's continuity, and the other part, I guess, would be that it is more of a economic development thing than it is the day-to-day operation of the airport. It might be good for us to all get together and decide how we do want it to be, those responsibilities up, but I don't think that it's, you know, we don't feel like we're put out by doing it. Everybody's on the same team, so.
Right. And I, and I don't, you know, and, and I think for the benefit of council, just to have something from the airport, the director of the airport, the, whoever oversees the airport, you know, just to say, hey, yeah, this piece of property, we aren't, we don't have future plans for this. I know there was a little bit of a controversy over the last one that we sold. We weren't, we were told that it may not have been beneficial to sell it to the contract that we sold it as. So I, I would like to see that we make sure that they are telling us that, you know, this is definitely a piece of property that can be sold.
Any other questions, comments for Zach? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution Number 147, 2022, Approving and Authorizing the Conveyance of Certain Real Property, Lot 1 of Atumwa Airport Subdivision 5 to Joe Wiley for the sum of $16,500. Recommendation: Pass and Adopt Resolution Number 147, 2022.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution Number 119, 2022, Approving the Des Moines River Flood Protection Operation Plan 2022. Recommendation: Pass and Adopt Resolution Number 119, 2022.
Move the recommendations presented.
Second.
Okay, Larry, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The City of Atumwa's Local Flood Protection Operation Plan outlines the coordination of city departments and establishes an effective command structure and assigns responsibilities during elevated river levels and flood emergencies. The manual includes specific action items based on river profile elevation. It further outlines some minimum standard maintenance requirements in which department has primary responsibilities for inspection and documentation requirements for those items. The plan authorizes the Director of Public Works to coordinate resources and manpower from various city departments to accomplish needed pre-flood improvements and authorize mobilization of contractors as needed. It is critical during emergency flood response to have the ability to coordinate the necessary responses without delays. The local county emergency manager works closely with the Public Works Department to identify state and federal resources and coordinate the availability on an evolving basis. The manual is required as part of the federal accreditation program and is integral to the completing of the flood insurance rate map requirements. I do want to point out that this is not a new manual. It's basically the original manual with updated contact information, updated contractor availability as far as what equipment, which ones are still in business. So it's, it's kind of an evolving document that is updated from time to time. It does include some additional definitions, more for people that come to assist, has kind of an outline, an overview of what we do and what we look for. I guess I'd entertain any, any questions on this. One of the things, I guess, I do point out is on both floods, I was here for both, and a lot of my senior staff was here for the 2008, 2010 flood. One of the things that we were able to do, we had about a four-day notice, which is typical through Red Rock and Decor. We were able to do quite a bit of improvements that minimized the impact on the community.
I, I'd just like to make a comment, and I appreciate that you provided all of us with a copy of that flood protection plan.
And I like how it's organized, and it's easy for me to get to what I need to get to, so.
And it's set up, if you look at the key features, based on river profile. Those are the things, it's not exact. You know, if the river gauge said 19 feet, we also look at a lot of other factors. Is there additional rain between here and Red Rock and some different basin areas? Is the release rate going to be reduced or increased? There's a lot of judgment just from years of working with the Corps and internal staff that goes into making those decisions when you close critical bridges or streets. Same way it assigns and through the process, who would be able to be authorized to require an evacuation. If we thought we had a levy reach that could breach, then we would activate that part. A lot of coordination, a lot of hours.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Larry? Well, we have 12 more resolutions, so I'm going to have Chris take the role on this one.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution Number 140, 2022, Award the 2022 Campground Shower House and Office Building Project to RG Construction of Atumwa, Iowa, in the amount of $573,872. Recommendation: Pass and Adopt Resolution Number 140, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Gene, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. Willett Hoffman Architects and the City of Atumwa staff sent out bids to 11 local contractors for the campground shower house project. Three bids were received. They are listed below. Number one- Three bids were received. They are listed below. Number one, RG Construction, $573,872. Number two, Frazee Construction, $587,700. And number three, Kristner Company, $637,950. City staff recommends accepting the low bid from RG Construction for $573,872. There is $800,000 budgeted for this project, and the engineer's cost estimate was $616,000.
Council, have any questions for Gene?
Gene, this is probably the most opportune time to be talking about this, since it's specific to awarding this bid, but I'm assuming RG Construction will be acting as general contractor. As people are going over to the park, who's actually supervising the people that are going over there and looking over plans and everything? Because there seems to be concern specific to people that are looking for electrical design and things like that. The campground hosts evidently don't have the proper plans to be able to tell people where to be going, to be looking for things. So can you talk about that for just a second?
Yeah, the project is gonna be supervised by Willett Hoffman, and I'm gonna be involved also myself. The city electricians were over there marking out the utilities the other day when I called one call. That's why there was a little bit of confusion. And I forwarded the plans to the city electrician, so they know what's going on.
Are the people that are supervising at the park, do they have a pretty good understanding at this point of what's going on as well?
Yeah, they do. I've marked out the four corners of the building, so the campground hosts know where it's gonna be placed at. And I haven't given them the plans and specifications yet, because I would have to print them out. It's like 30 pages, but I can do that, too.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Gene? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 143, 2022, awarding the contract for the Catch Basin Replacement Program 2022 to DC Concrete and Construction of Dowd's, Iowa, in the amount of $55,187.50. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 143, 2022.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Okay, Larry, you're up.
This is our annual Catch Basin Project Program, and it'll reconstruct and raise Catch Basin wells with new grades, as indicated on the plans and specifications. Basins are located on various streets within the City of Atumwa. Plans for the project were posted on the city web, submitted to Master Builders of Iowa for publication in their construction and updated plan service. It was also available for picking up in our office. Bids were received and opened by the City of Atumwa on May 25, 2022 at 2:00 p.m. One bid was received. The low bidder is DC Concrete Construction of Dowd's, Iowa, in the amount of $55,187.50. Each year, we budget $50,000 for this program. The additional funds will come from the sewer fund, sewer fund balance.
Any questions for Larry? Hearing that, and Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 144, 2022, awarding the contract for the Sanitary Utility Access Program 2022 to DC Concrete and Construction of Dowd's, Iowa, in the amount of $56,600. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 144, 2022.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Take it away, Larry.
Again, this is just one of our annual programs. This one is for sanitary manhole installs. They are installed in different areas, either where the manhole has failed or we have limited access. Same posting places. Bids were received and opened by the City of Atumwa on May 25, 2022. At 2:00 p.m., one bid was received. Again, the low bidder is DC Concrete Construction of Dowd's, Iowa, in the amount of $56,600. Again, we budgeted $50,000 under our annual program. The bid tab and plan holder list is attached. And on this one, same, the fund balance will come from the sewer fund balance.
Any questions for Larry? I guess one question I'd have, is the city historically used this construction company in the past, or is this a new company for the city to do business with?
No, they do a lot of work for us.
That's what I thought. And there's been no concerns with their quality of work or anything?
No, they do a good job for us.
Any other questions? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 145, 2022, approved purchase of an Elgin Pelican Street Sweeper in the amount of $199,611 from McQueen Equipment. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 145, 2022.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Mr. Seals?
This purchase is to replace an existing Elgin Street Sweeper that was purchased in 2016. Street sweepers are on a five-year replacement schedule. This unit was evaluated at 9/28/21 with a recommendation to be replaced. The fleet committee agreed with the recommendation at its meeting held on 11/30/21. Specs and costs were later approved by the fleet on May 18, 2022. Bids were solicited, and McQueen Equipment submitted the only bid at $246,411 with a trade-in value of $50,000 for the existing sweeper, leaving a net cost of $196,411. On April 1, 2022, the city was made aware of a factory surcharge due to increased material cost. That surcharge increased the total cost by $3,200 with a new total of $199,611. This is a budgeted item for fiscal year 22, '23, and we had budgeted $255,000.
How many street sweepers do we own?
Two.
Is this the second one we've replaced? This is the second one, right, that we've replaced?
Yeah, they're on just on a five-year rotational basis. We...
The other one was done a little bit ago, though, right?
Not too long ago.
Yeah.
I was gonna ask kind of a similar question. I mean, the street sweepers is a big piece of machinery. Why is it that they only last like five years before you need to replace them?
They're extremely high maintenance. We used to try to keep them longer, and over time, we looked at, okay, how much downtime do we have? How much is the cost? What is the lead time to get parts? That's one of the things, because we used to have three, and we'd rotate two through the day and one at night to do, you know, parking areas and stuff where we had reduced parking and traffic. So by reducing this, we still want to cover all of our streets. One thing that we've looked at over time is, it is far cheaper to pick material up off of the street than it is to actually back it out of the sanitary or storm. You always have a heavy load after the winter, sand, dirt. So it's an ongoing process. They run virtually year-round. In the winter, when it's below freezing, then they run dry on certain occasions. But again, we've tried extending that, and we've been successful, but we've also been unsuccessful. You know, if you have a drive motor out, it can cost you 10 grand. You know, if one of the pickup belts goes, I think it was 7,500. So we've looked at, when should we trade it to keep things running? And five years is what we come up with.
So the money saved, that'll go into a fund for this, and a new one in five years?
Right. The road use fund, this one's actually under the, I misspoke, it'll go back into, any money that we don't spend goes back into the fund balance on the sewer fund.
Any other questions for Larry? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 146, 2022, approve the purchase of a traffic signal microwave detection system from Mobotrax for the sum of $25,888 to be installed at the intersection of Highway 149 and Rochester Avenue. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 146, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Larry. This traffic signal on 149 and Rochester Avenue has experienced multiple loop detector failures and is in need of repair. Instead of reconstructing the entire intersection and installing standard loop detectors, which are prone to failure, microwave detection system will be permanently installed. This system was previously tested on Quincy Avenue with a great deal of success, and one of these systems was purchased last fiscal year. This purchase will be the same unit allowing for interchangeable programming hardware and software. A quote was received from Mobotrax in the sum of $25,888. This item has been budgeted through the electrical maintenance for the sum of $25,000 from the time of preparing budget. Prices for these systems, of course, have increased about 22%. Again, this will come from road use. One of the things that we have seen, where we used to pay $400 for a loop, and that's basically where they saw the cement, if you go up to a traffic signal, you'll see something that looks kind of like a modified diamond in a way. They went from $400 to $1,800 now. And when you look at the number of loops it takes in order to call up and change signals for left turn straight through, there's a lot of money. And if your concrete is broken, they can fail within three years. Your targeted date for the design life is seven. So by going to these, we actually drill a four-inch core hole. These pucks actually mount in the pavement and then are embedded in rubber. We can actually remove these and use them again. So that's a benefit long-term.
Larry, who controls that intersection? Is it Iowa DOT, or is it the City of Atumwa?
It's a joint effort. Anytime we change timings or we design and install a traffic signal, we have to get the blessing from the Traffic Division in Ames. And same way, if we want to change timing, we have to propose that, run it up through their traffic department because of joint liability.
So by joint effort, you mean we pay for it, but we have to ask for permission?
Basically, we pay for it, we maintain it, and we ask permission.
Great relationship. Thanks.
Kind of like being married.
Such a cynic. I do agree with you, though. Any other questions for Larry? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 149, 2022, awarding the contract for asbestos abatement and demolition of the condemned property at 512 North Green to Weston McKee of Fairfield, Iowa, for the total bid amount $23,500. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 149, 2022.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Okay, Zach, it's all yours.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. The next three of these are asbestos and demolition bids for previously condemned properties. For all these projects, bids were accepted until 2:00 p.m. on May 26, 2022. For this one, 512 North Green, two asbestos bids and three demolition bids were received. Weston McKee submitted the best bids in the amount of $3,300 for asbestos and $20,200 for demolition. Staff recommends awarding him the contract.
Any questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 150, 2022, awarding the contract for asbestos abatement and demolition of the condemned property at 126 North Davis to Dustin Smith and Dan Larson, both of Atumwa, Iowa, for the total bid amount $13,010. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 150, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Zach.
Thank you, Mayor. For this property, 126 North Davis, we received three demolition bids, two asbestos bids, and Dustin Smith and Dan Larson together submitted the best bids in the amount of $5,610 for asbestos, $7,400 for demolition, and we recommend awarding them the contract.
Any questions for Zach from the council? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 151, 2022, awarding the contract for asbestos abatement and demolition of the condemned property at 250 South Ward to Dustin Smith and Dan Larson, both of Atumwa, Iowa, for the total bid amount $13,500. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 151, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Zach.
Same thing this time. We also received two asbestos bids, three demolition bids. Dustin Smith and Dan Larson submitted the best bids in the amount of $2,100 for asbestos and $11,400 for demolition, and staff recommends awarding the contract.
Any questions for Zach? Not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 153, 2022, appointing UMB Bank NA of West Des Moines, Iowa, to serve as paying agent, note registrar, and transfer agent, approving the paying agent and note registrar and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of the agreement. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 153, 2022.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Phil, I believe you're gonna take this?
All right. Yeah, so these next four are all similar. It's two and two. There's two pieces to each of these. This should be the final authorization resolution of the bonding that had been approved throughout the last couple of months. So city staff identified the need for certain capital projects requiring financing. Based upon the fiscal year audit ending 6/30/21, legal debt limit in the city was 52 million, which is 5% of the total assessed valuation of the city. With debt service dropping off the schedule and short-term financing paid, the city is well within the limit for this borrowing. The capital plan had been approved at prior meetings, and the request to borrow up to $8 million general obligation capital loan notes was approved. This piece is the $5 million, and this is assigning UMB Bank to serve in that capacity. The next resolution is the actual authorization to proceed with the acquisition of the dollars, and I'll talk about the next two after that. I can answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from council? Okay, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 154, 2022, approving and authorizing a form of loan agreement and authorizing and providing for the issuance of $5 million general obligation capital loan note Series 2022A and levying a tax to pay the notes with approval of the tax exemption certificate. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 154, 2022.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Okay, so this would be the actual designation or authorization to take on that obligation and to levy the tax to pay that. Like was mentioned by Tim Oswald, this is well within our capacity and capability of paying that, and is been projected for the future budget cycle.
Just to clarify, when you're saying levy the tax to pay the note, that's already the debt service that we already pay, correct? Or the levy tax?
Yes. So we do levy, you know, part of our tax levy is for debt service, and this portion of this $8 million was included in the current budget for next year that was approved earlier this year. And so this is part of that already. It's not adding that on top of what we've already approved in the budget.
Just trying, kind of clarifying.
Yep, no, I appreciate that.
Listening, we're not actually adding more taxes to your taxes.
Nothing that wasn't previously planned for.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And I think another clarifying point, just for the public, is even though the city originally was looking
originally was looking at bonding for all this, it was decided that it was cheaper to go through bank financing instead, correct?
I'm sorry, what was that?
That it was cheaper to go.
Yes.
Bank financing instead of the bonds.
Yes. So that was one of the things that was looked at by the financial advisor, Piper Sandler, Tim Oswald of that company, in looking at going to market versus a local bank sale. And this was a more affordable option, all things considered. You're looking at bond issuance, looking at the ratings, all of that. This was the better option and saves the taxpayers and the city money in the end.
Yeah, I just think that's an important point to make.
Agreed.
Any other questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution Number 156-2022, appointing UMB Bank NA of West Des Moines, Iowa to serve as paying agent, note registrar, and transfer agent, approving the paying agent and note registrar and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of the agreement. Recommendation, pass and adopt Resolution Number 156-2022.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Okay, Phil. All right. So similar to the last one, this is a two-part resolution. This is the part that is establishing the entity to operate on our behalf. This is for the $3 million taxable portion of the note. And if there's any questions, I can try to address those.
So the good thing is this is all being done through the same bank.
Yes. Yep. And that was one of the things when the banks, there was, I think, one of them that had one of each, but it did keep it all in the same, and it had a better blended rate when we were looking at it, and it met the terms that were established at the time of presenting that to banks for submitting.
Any questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution Number 157-2022, approving and authorizing a form of loan agreement and authorizing and providing for the issuance of $3 million taxable general obligation capital loan notes Series 2022B and levying a tax to pay the notes. Recommendation, pass and adopt Resolution Number 157-2022.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. One more time, Mr. Raff.
All right. So again, this is the second half of that. This is the actual issuance of the dollars, the $3 million, and this is the taxable general obligation notes and levying a tax for payment of that. Again, this was something that was budgeted for. It is within the confines of what was budgeted earlier this year, payable in the future. It is not adding anything additional to what was not already previously planned.
Any questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 3197-2022, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Atumwa, Iowa by conditionally rezoning property generally located at 1321 Asbury Drive in the City of Atumwa and directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance number and date of this change on the official zoning map. Recommendation, pass the second consideration of ordinance Number 3197-2022.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Okay, Zach.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. So this ordinance is a second consideration, but I do want to spend a little bit of time on it because I'd gotten some questions over the last couple of days. Ordinance 3124-2017, so five years ago, conditionally rezoned the property at 1321 Asbury Drive from R1 to R5 for a multifamily residential development not to exceed five units. And it also had the stipulation that the development should begin within five years. And if the development does not begin within five years, then the developer was to provide a progress report to the council. And then the language in the ordinance was, "The owner shall deliver a progress report illustrating substantive progress toward project inception, at which time an agreement extension will be granted to the owner." So really, what we kind of saw was, we needed to get the report to demonstrate that they have made substantial progress toward a project, and if that is the case, then we should extend the terms as they were previously. So the developer did provide a 350-page progress report. I included some of the elements from that, including the cover letter and some other documents in the packet. They did develop a project for the site for the 2021 round of Iowa low-income tax credits. However, that year, all but two of the awarded projects were for areas affected by the Duray Show, which made it harder to be competitive, obviously. They have redesigned the project for an application this year, which they're putting in this month. And that application and that project will actually be many fewer units than the original design. This would be a townhome concept with four, five-unit townhome buildings placed on the lot or on that area for a total of 20 units. But something that was interesting here was the original 60-something unit project was all going to be all single-family, targeted toward seniors. This project is more for families. So even with just 20 units, there's actually about the same number of bedrooms between that project and this project. So still very much in line with some of the things that we wanted to do around housing. But in general, they did demonstrate progress toward achieving that project. So the recommendation for staff is to extend for a further five years the previous terms. That's what this ordinance would do. It provides an extension. Also, the developer, I already said that. Okay.
Any questions for Zach?
So if the property owner doesn't get that grant, then this could delay this project, correct?
Then they'll pursue again. And every year, the formula that they look for for that grant changes a little bit, so then they tweak the design or they make changes. But this year, there's a really strong application. There's a second site that they're looking at, so they would have the scattered site. They'd satisfy the townhome component. There are a lot of things that are strong this year, and the Duray Show isn't a factor. So it is a strong application this year.
Okay, if there's no other questions, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 3199-2022, establishing a Human Rights Commission within the City of Atumwa. Recommendation, pass the first consideration of ordinance Number 3199-2022.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Okay, Phil, I believe you're going to present this.
Yeah, something that's been going on. I believe we're kind of aware of the history on this, but for the benefit of the public, this is something, back in 1982, city code was amended, combined Human Rights Commission and the Fair Housing Board, and updated the code as pertained to the Human Rights Commission. In 2015, the city code was again amended to abolish the local Human Rights Commission and revise the complaint process referring claims to the Iowa Civil Rights Commission or the state. And that was in part due to some falloff. Many of the cases that were before the commission at that time were already being referred to the state, and there was not a lot of interest in gaining participants to serve on that board. During the recent planning process, however, to update the comprehensive plan, our Atumwa 2040 identifies celebrating diversity as one of the four overarching goals for the next 20 years. And despite the call to celebrate diversity, the original draft of planning document fell a little short on content. And prior to that final draft, the staff, Zach Simonson, myself, Mayor, and others sought more input from various groups in the community. One of the suggestions that came from those meetings was to reinstate the local Human Rights Commission, and I understand there are a number of individuals in the community that are interested in participating in that. Following the adoption of the comprehensive plan, the mayor and I had a few follow-up meetings, researched the topic a little bit more. In accordance with Iowa City or Iowa Code, cities with populations greater than 29,000 are required to establish and fund a local civil rights commission. The code does not prohibit smaller cities from establishing similar. However, there may be limitations to enforcement, local discriminatory ordinances against entities exempt under the Iowa Civil Rights Act. From research and other meetings, it appeared the commission was, I mentioned that already, through meetings and working with the State Department of Human Rights, it was suggested that we perhaps start not with an, again, civil rights investigatory-type process, but more of a human rights aspect focusing on education, advocacy, equity and inclusion efforts, promotion in that regard. That led to a meeting ago drafting a draft charter before the council, had a work session to kind of identify that. From that and the direction that the group would look like initially, the code that is before you was drafted. This identifies the makeup of the commission and then the powers or duties that the commission would hold initially. Again, this could change by change of code in the future, by, you know, suggestion from the commission as they start to meet and identify other areas that are needs for the city. But at this point, this is to get us off the ground and reestablish the Human Rights Commission, and I would seek your approval of that.
Does Council have any questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Wave the second and third considerations, pass and adopt ordinance Number 3199-2022.
So moved.
Second. Do you have anything you want to add on that portion?
You know, the only thing I would say is typically, we look to read ordinances three times, especially in cases when there is a possibility for contention in the community. Prior to presenting this and at the time that that draft charter was presented, I had requested of the council your consideration on, did you want to read all three, or were you wanting to maybe wave the second and third? Based off of that meeting and the direction at that time, that is why this is before you here, is to wave the second and third and proceed with moving it forward and being able to schedule, identify individuals, get those appointed, and then schedule time with the Department of Human Rights to come down and assist with some training and getting the group started.
So I just have a quick question. So let's say we approve the first or the second and third wave or public hearing, I apologize. Will the application, will people be able to start applying tomorrow?
No. It would be after publication of the ordinance. Once that is published, that officially puts the ordinance into play, and at that time, they'd be able to. So we'd work up, you know, the application and have that ready to go as soon as that publication hits and be ready.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah. So that's a good clarification of how an ordinance becomes law. You read it one, two, or three times, and then it's after a publication that is officially becomes code.
We could put that on the city's website once its applications are ready to go.
Can we do a little song and dance on the Schoolhouse Rock?
I was just getting ready to say, I'm not sure that's exactly how the Bill song went, but.
No, no.
Any other questions for Phil on recommendation B? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Honorable Mayor, before moving to the public forum, I just wanted to clarify the items earlier with the Legion Field and Pickwick Park. Both of those were actually the same. There was agreements with both of those. So I apologize for misleading the council on Pickwick Park. However, along with that, those agreements were both published or put on the agenda at the May 17 meeting, and that was part of that publication process. The conveyance language in here, page 122 and 134 respectively, it does have in there that adopting the resolution tonight, this conveyance document, does also approve those agreements from the past. So that.
And I guess, so I found those two while I was looking, but I guess my concern is is that when, I think I specifically asked, are we approving this tonight? And we were approving the public hearing, because I would have asked that question then and asked clarifications then. So that's where I was just a little confused, too. So.
Yes. And so that's why I wanted to clarify this. And two things, either if the council wanted to reconsider Pickwick Park and review that agreement again and look at that, that is a possibility, because the action here does also approve that agreement that was in place. Or if you wanted to reconsider the Legion Field and actually take that. But I understand if you're not comfortable either way with those, but since they are the same, I wanted to at least call that before we adjourn the meeting, that you had the opportunity to act one way or the other, leave it as you have it right now, and postpone the Legion Field discussion until the next meeting.
A point of clarification. So when you're saying the same, you are talking about the, like, if they were just, what do you mean the same? Say that again.
So there was purchase agreements for both of those that were requested. When the request for the public hearing was done at the May 17 meeting, those purchase agreements were attached to that. So if you look back at your materials from that meeting, that was a part of that. And then in the conveyance documents here, section two of that of each of those resolutions states that we're approving the purchase agreement along with the conveyance of the land to the school district. So the terms that were in the purchase agreement would also be part of the sale, and the mayor and clerk would have the authority to sign those agreements. These are agreements that were drafted by our city attorney that were in the, in my opinion, the interests of the city, and the school district had approved both of those as well. I'd be happy to bring up or talk about either of those or any issues within there. The main things, like you'd mentioned, the conveyance, the reconveyance of the property back to the city was part of the Legion Field that was laid out in the agreement. That started on page 21 of the May 17 agenda.
I'm pulling it up now.
What's that?
I said I'm pulling it up now.
Okay. And the Pickwick Park started on page 48 of that same agenda. So I apologize for the confusion. I also need to reread these resolutions when they come through, because some things like that can get confusing.
I know. My biggest concern was the, where the property goes when it's done, you know, the school's done with it. And Councilwoman Galloway has expressed that.
Yep.
If it's in there, I'm a little less worried about the Pickwick part of it than I am the ballpark part of it. If the ballpark is to be sold and we don't have first rights to it, that's an issue. I'm a little less worried about the Pickwick Park. I don't think we're going to ever need to take that back, or they're going to want to sell that back anyway. So.
Yes. And the conveyance was a part of the Legion Field. So it does clearly state in the provisions that.
Administrator Raff, I'm not finding this. I'm in May 17. Page 17 is employee stuff. So which page is it? And then I'm looking at the contract, and there's not a page 17 unless I'm completely missing it again.
You're in the packet online?
Yes. 179 pages.
So it was, yeah, it started at page 21 for the Legion Field. And then it had that, the agreement in there. The purchase agreement, real estate purchase agreement, actually starts on page 30 of that packet. The stuff before it was the public hearing and the resolution going with that. This is where it talks about the closing possession, real estate taxes, condition of the property, you know, a lot of the legal jargon in there. The parts that are important to the city, I believe, the deed and deed restrictions, number 11. It says, "Upon payment of the purchase price, city shall convey the property to the district by deed without warranty, which deed shall include the following provisions. A, a use restriction, district shall not discontinue use of the property for recreational and athletic purposes. B, a conditional reversionary right provided that if A, the district discontinues use of the property for..." the property for recreational athletic purposes, or B, in event of default caused by a district occurs, the city shall automatically be entitled to reacquire title to the property. And C, a right of first refusal providing that if the district should desire to sell the property at any time in the future, um, for use as a recreational and athletic facility or any other use, the district must first provide the city with opportunity to purchase the property from the district for $1, uh, by the district providing written notice to the city if the district has intention to sell the property, waiting for a period of 30 days, following such written notice to accept any offers for sale of the property other than an offer from the city, meeting the terms of this right of first refusal. So we have the automatic right to repurchase it for $1, uh, should they decide decide to sell it in the future. If the city should desire to exercise the conditional reversionary right or right of first refusal, the state should provide written notice of such intention to the district. Upon receipt of such written notice, district shall take all right reasonable steps to ensure the city acquires remarkable title of the property to its exercise of the rights under this section within 60 days of the city's written notice, including without limitation the execution of appropriate deeds and other documents. So we are not giving up anything to them. They have to use it for recreational purposes. If they choose not to in the future, we've got the right to reacquire it. Uh, if they decide to build a new great athletic facility somewhere else in the city and not have a need for this and want to sell it, they can't sell it to anyone else without first offering it to us for $1, which is what we're, um, offering to sell it to them for. Uh, and the rest again is, uh, the legal, um, talk about, uh, the property and general provisions, et cetera. So I just wanted to clarify that. And, uh, as far as them being the same, they both had notice of public hearing on that date. They both had per real estate, uh, purchase agreements that were attached at that time. And both of these conveyances, that section two refers back to that agreement. So again, if you wanted to revert back and pull back on Pickwick Park, or if you wanted to consider moving forward with Legion Field tonight, I just wanted to give you that opportunity before we close the meeting.
So what's the pleasure of the council? Do you want to leave, um, public hearing G1 table till next council meeting? Or do you want to go back and redo it now? Councilman Galloway, did you find the?
Yeah, I'm reading it now. I guess my question is, have the other council people read it, um, or reviewed it prior today, today again? So, I mean, I can look at it right now and review.
So do you want to leave it table till next time?
It's up to, it does not matter to me. I've I've read it, I've seen it.
What's the pleasure of the council?
My only question was from the beginning was make sure that it was in there, that if they no longer use it, they sell it back to us for a dollar or so, I I'm fine with it.
Phil, I do have a couple of questions on if we're gonna untable it, and I'm fine with that.
I would, I would just, I would say just, let's leave it for the next meeting. Let's leave it tabled so that we all have a chance to review all the, all the material and and get it fresh in our minds, and then we'll bring it back to the next meeting. That's, uh, but, I mean, I'm not the one that motioned to table it, so it's.
Doesn't matter.
That's fine.
Well, anybody could motion to remove it from the table.
I know, but I'm not the one that motioned to table it, so I'm not going to be the one that unmotions it.
Gotcha, okay. It's not a procedural thing, but a.
I mean, I guess I'll move to unmotion it. I just have a quick question, and I think all the other information has been provided. My quick, uh, question is, are there restrooms there? Because I know we said that the parking lot's going to be, um, maintained by the, uh, park, but is, or the city, are there restrooms there? And if so, who's going to be in charge of those on game days and during practices? Is that the responsibility of the city or is that the responsibility of the school? Is it a joint effort? What does that look like?
So we have a motion to remove it from the table. Do we have a second to remove her from the table?
Second. Okay, Chris will take the role.
Well, did you want to address Kara's questions first?
Well, are we removing, is there's a motion in a second?
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, yes, we need to do that first, sorry.
So Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
And I think Gene is prepared to respond.
Yeah, the Legion Baseball Field has their own set of dedicated restrooms that are right next to the concession stand and the bleachers. They're not open to the public, they're just specifically for the baseball diamond.
Perfect, thank you.
And that is part of the property for acquisition.
Right, and the high school will be doing the maintenance and cleaning of those restrooms.
Perfect, thank you.
And I believe that is also part of their future, um, plans for reconstruction or remodel.
Any other questions?
So I think now I need to read the resolution again, and we need to have a motion and a second and a vote, correct?
I would say yes.
Okay. So resolution number 124, 2022, public hearing on the proposal to convey certain real property locally known as Legion Field to Atoma Community School District. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 124, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions for Phil? One last time. If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you, and I apologize for the confusion on that.
Okay, this is the point in the council meeting where I always ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to bring up any other items that are not on tonight's agenda. If not, um, I don't believe we have any petitions or communications, but I guess I would like to just make a quick comment before we adjourn. I just want to thank the city council, even though it was on the consent agenda tonight and we didn't really talk about it. I just want to thank the council for approving the three proclamations that they approved today, the Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month proclamation for the month of June, the Atoma Pride Month, uh, for June, and that event will be celebrated in Central Park on June 25th, Saturday, June 25th, and then the Juneteenth proclamation, uh, that will also be celebrated on June 19th. I think by the council, supporting and approving these proclamations, it continues to show that this council is very committed to diversity and inclusivity in our city, and I applaud you for continuing to go down that path. So thank you very much. If there's no other comments.
I do want to mention, we also briefed over it because it was in the consent agenda, but I do want to congratulate the three firefighters that we did promote here tonight. It's a step forward in our fire department in, um, ensuring that the future of the fire department sound. It's a very big deal for them.
Well, I would love to see more diversity there as well as just one woman. You know, I would love to see other people of color, pull somebody else up. That's, that's my thing, so.
Hopefully that'll continue to go down that path in the future. But we do finally have our first woman firefighter in Atoma, so that's exciting.
It is.
Anybody else have any comments or anything you'd like to say before I ask for a motion to adjourn? Okay, do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
We are adjourned, and thank you, everybody, for sticking with us this evening.